Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. This is a work session of the Capella City Council. We've already convened into session, and this is the work session. And thanks for joining us. We're on item two, discussion regarding agenda items. Is there anything that anybody in the council has to ask questions of before or about?
Before anybody jumps in, I got a message from John earlier today on the agreement with CISD. The word should be "without." The school district will be not without one SRO at the high school and two others that the word in the text says "with." So just to clean that up, we're going to clean that up. In section 2.03, I think.
Let's have some clarification on the same SRO. Just question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I know, I wanted to wait.
So is Danny here?
They're supposed to be. Somewhere.
I gotta stay here.
But no. We're gonna go wrestle him up. I just was on the phone with him 10 minutes ago.
You might be able to ask me since I work in. I'd not be able to answer. If it's operational, I mean.
It's operational.
Okay, well, let's just defer that till he gets here, and then we can ask him.
Okay.
Anybody? Everybody understand what happened on the public hearings? We basically missed a newspaper date. We're just going to have to defer the vote to September the 13th. I apologize for the oversight on our part.
Who called the city out?
The city. The city called the city out.
The city called.
Oh, you found it.
Yeah, we called ourselves out.
I just thought it.
All right. Well, we will defer John's question until Danny gets here. I believe the next item is a report from our school district and Dr. Hunt regarding demographics and I'm sure all sorts of other interesting stuff, so. You've got a microphone up here if you can. And I appreciate you not putting me on the hot seat last night, so thank you very much.
You're on.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Great little drum roll there.
Or a gong.
Or a gong, yeah. I'm done, yeah. Seriously, good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. I'm Brad Hunt, Superintendent Capella ISD, and I have with me our Executive Director and Chief Communication Officer Angela Brown and one of our school board members, Ms. Lee Walker. And we are excited to be able to give you a few updates of what's going on in CISD. We had a great start. We are into week two already. Last Wednesday was our first day of school, and boy, it was exciting and a great, great beginning. So proud of our kids, our teachers. Really a smooth start as we, you know, work through the normal hiccups of transportation and any other kind of little back-to-school kind of starts. Overall, really, really smooth. And subsequently, TEA, the Texas Education Agency, released our school ratings, and we received an A, which is 97 out of 100. So very, very proud of that, very proud of our students. We have amazing students, great families, and incredible teachers. All of that is working hand-in-hand to make our kids experiencing Capella ISD so successful. We know that this grade is more than just one test one day, and our kids are more than just one test one day. But we're proud of it. We've worked hard. Our teachers, again, have worked really, really hard. In the DFW area, we're number four. And then when you look at the districts that are a little bit ahead of us, they are substantially smaller than us. So given our size, again, we're very, very proud of that rating. But we also know that our kids are more than one test on one day. And so we've been working on a community-based accountability system, or CBAS, which really adequately reflects who we are as a district. There are seven different pillars. We've been focusing on three. We're going to be launching that dashboard later this month, and just real excited to be able to share that with the community. But super proud of our kids. Several of them were on the slide there. Like I said, when you look at where we stack with our surrounding districts, we're very proud, very proud of where we are in relation to other public schools as well as our charter schools. We recognize the competition that we are all in regarding students, and we want to make sure that when students reside in Capella ISD that they are getting the most exceptional educational experience that they possibly can. And again, very, very proud of that rating, the hard work of our kids, our amazing teachers, and of course, the support of our parents and our community. But we wanted to make sure that as a community, the City of Capella is aware of where we are with our student enrollment. We've worked with a demographer that has helped us stay up-to-date on new homes that are being built, as well as single-family as well as multifamily. As you all are aware, we cover more than just Capella City proper. And then also with Capella City proper, we have open enrollment available for River Chase and Capella Greens. And then outside the City of Capella, we have parts of Irving, Valley Ranch, the Cypress Waters area, which is the City of Dallas, as you know, with a little piece of Louisville. And so you can see from the first slide just where we are with our housing and future housing, homes under construction, the Austin Elementary School, Barbara Austin. We still have homes under construction there. We know that Lakeside Elementary is kind of next with an increase, and that's the Blackberry Farms development that is to come. And then our biggest growth has been primarily in the southern part of our district, which is Richard J. Lee Elementary School and Canyon Ranch Elementary School as well as Capella Middle School West.
What's driving the Austin growth?
It's South Haven, um, something, West Haven, South Haven. The one that's right off of Beltline and.
So Austin goes all the way down there? Okay.
It's really not that far when you think about it. I know that for, and you can kind of see on the screen, that little pink part is covering that part of South Haven. You know, that is where the new lots are as well as future lots. The Lakeside area, you can see the yellow part, which is future. That's the Blackberry Farms. And then, as I mentioned, what we have for Canyon Ranch as well as Lee Elementary. And so you can see from the map that we do cover more than Capella City proper. As I mentioned, we went through a major boundary realignment several years ago. As we continue to look at our numbers, we're constantly looking at where we can make individual tweaks and adjustments as we look at moving on to the big picture down the road. And here's our 10-year forecast. You can see that we are, you know, moving quite along with all of our numbers. We did see a slight decline with COVID, but we've seen a bounce back. We had, last year, the first nine weeks of school, we began a virtual option for pre-K through sixth grade. This year, that virtual option is not available. All of our students are back in person. And so we see families making some decisions based on that information as well as home prices and what is available. You know what the home market is right now. And so we look at what we have presently and, you know, obviously are focusing on our elementary schools because we believe those kids are moving up through the system. But we also want to make sure that we have adequate space at our secondary schools, both middle school and high school. And then another slide where you can see comprehensive just where everybody is, elementary, middle, and high schools. You can see our district totals. We had been considered a fast-growth district for several years. That has somewhat slowed down. And so you can again see where our growth is outside of the City of Capella as well as within. New home sales in 2021 accounted for about 13% of all of our district sales. New home starts and closings declined significantly in 2020. We feel like that was due to a lack of available lots and also supply as well as maybe some labor shortages. Again, we work with our demographer to have updated information and just see where those trends are in the DFW area. There is groundwork underway for nearly 75 lots within some of our subdivisions that are moving forward. We're expected to enroll over 13,726 students by '26, '27, with over 13,866 by '20, '21, '22. And so we look at all of these numbers, and that's kind of caught us to a point where... Oh, sorry, key takeaways. You can see on the key takeaways, I kind of did a little bit of brief update on that already. We're about 13,000 students right now, just a little over that number. We're continually enrolling new students all the time. We get great feedback from that middle-of-the-week start. Starting on a Wednesday, we hear good things from our parents and kids, also teachers. But sometimes, parents take that as an opportunity to just wait and have their kids start on a full week. Other times, parents wait until after Labor Day. Some families are relocating either from other parts of the state or the nation or even out of the country. And so we expect to see even an uptick in enrollment after Labor Day on September the 12th. But again, all of this has kind of led us to determine that we're at a point where we need to be looking at a bond to make some decisions about where we are with our student population as well as facilities. We had a kickoff meeting last night with our school board where our bond committee was given the official charge from our board president. I know that several people in this room are a part of that bond planning committee. We had a facilities committee do some work a few years ago and a visioning committee that's been working for the past couple of years. We're going to put that all together with the hope of bringing a bond to the community of May 2023. But I know there were some questions that I have had from city council members regarding where we are with our student growth. And so I leave this slide up to answer any questions you might have about any of them, but particularly where we are with our student population at this time.
I'll start. So I'm a bit, I was actually expecting to see the growth rate be a little bit higher than it is. It's nice that it's not, you know, continuing like it has been for the last 20 years. Are you going to have to do any realignment of the elementary schools to meet the change in what we're seeing? Or the current alignment going to work out okay for you?
And that's to be determined. As we've seen, we have a heavy growth in the southern part of the district, and we don't want to overburden those campuses down there. They have been built to be a little bit larger than our footprint elementary schools, which are Barbara, Austin, Town Center, Wilson. Those are all the footprints. So with the exception of Pinkerton, all of the footprint elementary schools are within Capella City limits. So Canyon Ranch, and I'm sorry, Valley Ranch is in the Irving area. But Canyon Ranch and Lee Elementary were both built to be a little bit larger with that anticipated growth. That will be a decision that our bond committee will review as we look at those numbers and bring some recommendations to our board to make some decisions about what we might need to be doing at the elementary level as we've seen some declines in some areas, but also making certain that we accommodate the growth from the south.
Bijou?
Thank you, Brad, for the presentation.
Yes.
Out of the 13,154, do you have any numbers slicing to how many of them are from proper Capella versus outside of Capella?
Well, as you can see from the chart, I mean, I don't have those numbers pulled separately, but you can see the campuses that are outside of Capella are Valley Ranch, which is 485, and then Canyon Ranch, which is 819, and then Lee Elementary, which is 717. So you pull those three out for elementary plus middle school west, which is 1,097, gives you an idea of how many are coming from the City of Capella as opposed to outside of CISD. But also, too, not all of those are Capella residents. Some might be employees. Employees are able to bring their children to CISD as an employee benefit if they work within the district. And so they may be coming from other school districts, really anywhere where their parents might live.
But high school students are also coming from that.
Correct, yes.
Right, so you don't have a total number?
The CHS9, New Tech, and Capella High School could be coming from areas outside of Capella, correct?
John?
Do you, are you able to track? Well, I'm assuming students go to private schools, go to charter schools, or come back from, or, you know, go and come back. And there's always movement back and forth. Are you able to track trends? Is that increasing, decreasing? Is it all sort of the same sort of? I mean, I'm assuming there's a transitory piece that's just always in motion, but how does that change over time?
We do track that. That changes a lot. Obviously, with any charters that are in Capella City proper, they're going to be big competitors for us. And oftentimes, it's exactly that. They may go for a little bit and realize that that maybe isn't the right fit for them and then come back to CISD. If it's a charter experience, sometimes with privates, it's harder for us to compete because they're seeking something that we may not be able to offer specifically that's related to religion. So with the charter situation, especially you can see from our rating, I mean, we are rating higher than charters, and so we want to make sure that that is shared with our community. We want to make sure that our community knows what they get for the value of their educational experience in CISD. So we look at what charters are targeting our kids. We feel like we get poached quite a bit from certain charters. They have a very aggressive marketing campaign. They spend a lot of money on marketing. We spend our money on our kids. We spend our money on our resources. So it's just a different focus with the charters. But yes, we look at charters, we look at private schools, we look at homeschool because we want to know what those trends are. That is something that we are able to do in-house, but also that's where a demographer helps us a lot so that we can find out where is it that our kids are going. Because just like we have the option for employees to bring their kids here, there are teachers that live in CISD that work in other school districts, and they may take their kids with them. It might be more convenient for them. It might be a better fit for them. We look at all those trends.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Just curious as to the trend enrollment projections right there. On 2027, that's the only one with a negative projection. Is there a specific reason?
2027?
If you don't get a total change?
Again, that's based on demographers' projections, you know, just looking at trends. You know, in the future, I think they look at all kinds of areas, housing prices, job market. You know, those, I think, are two of the main things that they're looking at.
I was just wondering why that year, you know?
Yeah, I don't know why that one particular year would be the decline. You know, some of this is crystal ball. You don't really know for sure how it's going to be.
I think there's something you need to know.
Yeah.
I don't know for a fact, but that's probably following an economic trend that they're expecting a downturn in the economy at that point.
Possibly. I mean, he looks at, his whole team looks at just what's the future, future trends, what has happened in the past, is to kind of relate to, to make those projections. He's pretty accurate. But again, we're dealing with people, and people make different decisions, and it's only as accurate as the moment that is occurring. And so, you know, for sure, if that's going to be that way, we don't know. But we, he's been pretty accurate with his predictions in the past. And so we look at that to help make some decisions on that.
So, John, my answer was coming from, two years ago, we were expecting to see economic downturn significant right now. And since we've been so slow coming out of COVID, the country just hasn't developed the upward mobiles that we were expecting occurred before now. So all of those numbers are getting pushed out into the future.
You know, you hear.
And I don't know that that's what's causing that, but that would be consistent with what the commercial industry is seeing in business.
And I would agree to that. I mean, we hear, yeah, neighborhood turnover. We hear that a lot. Historically, what would happen is that families, once their kids graduate from Capella ISD, would maybe downsize and do a different location. I think the city has worked hard to provide an opportunity for, you know, Capella for a lifetime, not just for a moment. And so we're seeing more families stay, also because they may have an interest in selling, but maybe they don't, can't find what they're, you know, needing to buy. And so we're seeing some impact there. We're seeing some families that the price point, they're just being priced out and just not able to come, especially if they have younger children. So we do see higher numbers at the secondary level. I know it's all based on home prices, but I think that's a factor.
Bijou?
Yeah, Brad, one more question. Do you have any slide with the student demographics?
Our demographics?
Yeah.
I didn't bring a slide on that, though. But we're, I'm sorry.
Do you have a breakdown on the number of students that are going to charter schools versus being homeschooled versus what are going through CISD?
We do, yeah. I didn't bring that tonight, but yeah, we look at those numbers. We know if they're going within, well, really, wherever they're requesting records, we can chart where they are going for their school. And so again, we see that movement, and our communications team, Ms. Brown specifically, has reached out to those families to just have some conversations about what is the motivation behind those moves? What is the motivation behind those changes? So again, we can track that and use that. With demographics, you know, we're, I think, I know, high Indian Asian, probably 56, I think. Caucasian, I think, is 26. African-American, 14%, and then I think, or Hispanics, 14%. African-American is, I think, eight to 10. And we don't have those accurate numbers to date. Those are based on what we had last year. We submit all of those to the Texas Education Agency. We also have our TAPER report, which is part of PEMS, which we have a lot of acronyms in education, so I'm spilling them all out. But I mean, that's what helps us track our, both by gender and by ethnicity, as far as that part of demographics. Our economic, I think we're at 10% to 12% socially, social economically disadvantaged. And then languages, other than English, I think is, I want to say 26, but that may not be accurate.
John?
So just sort of reading into some of these numbers down here at the district chain, so it looks like these three years, these next three years, actually, about 500 kids increase is what we're expecting. Is this all, is this Cypress Waters impact? Is that primarily what's driving that?
Primarily Cypress Waters, but also what will be, what will get out of Blackberry Farms and South Haven.
Okay.
Those are the two big developments that we're looking at as well as what is the growth down the Cypress Waters in the southern part of our district, which is the area 114, which is Irving.
Well, that seems, seems like pretty good pressure on the system here for a couple of years here, you know, having to take that influx of additional students here.
We have the room, so we don't feel too, you know, cramped just yet. We do have the room, we have the space, but we're just trying to plan ahead and make sure that we have, you know, things that are taken care of so that we are future planning and not just looking at today.
So these are all new builds, you can talk about increased tax value as far as revenue, additional revenue sources to go along with additional staffing or whatever else you have to take on everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bijou? Bijou?
Yeah, how many students transferred out of the school district last year or this year?
Transferred out?
Out.
Would have been less than about 800.
I was thinking it was 750 to 800. And again, variety of reasons. Some are not happy with us, some are not happy with our demographics, some want religion in schools, some want a smaller school. I mean, it's really, parents like to have choices, and they have choices about where they want to go. We're continuing to promote our, a district and want to make sure that our families stay here, but we recognize that families do have choices and they make those decisions.
I think last year was about 900 plus.
So, yes, the Texas Education Agency tracks some of that. I'll be honest, there's a flaw in their system.
Okay.
And I have conversations with them frequently about that. But so it's, it's, there are some reports you can see that looks like it's 900, but that's not exactly accurate, so, yeah.
And we've had several updates to our board and community with those slides. Bijou and I would have brought those, so I had unknown. I just thought we were looking more on enrollment, what we currently have. But yes, we definitely look at the impact of charters and other school, you know, districts around us.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Hunt? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you all. Appreciate the partnership that we have with the city. You guys are great to work with. We thank you, thank you. Thank you again. I had a great start to this school year. Really appreciate our school resource officers. We had a training today with Crays, with Byron Mitchell and T, and they just did an outstanding job. So appreciate y'all very much. Thank you. And of course, we appreciate Danny. Hope you got, heard the shout-out for two of your police officers are great.
Thanks, Brad. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to go back and catch John's question for Danny, so. You're on, you're up, sir.
I just had a couple of questions just to get a better understanding of the SRO. On the SRO, I guess it's talking about the eight-hour shift during the regular school term, right? And then during summer and winter vacations, they're actually working for the city, I'm thinking?
Yes. Well, with the exception of the sergeant, he works the summer school. He just stays, he stays on our payroll, city payroll.
Okay. And that's where I was going to, is that how the 50% covered by the CISD for the salary and benefits, is that how that was determined, based on the months?
Right, it's 50% just during the school year.
Only the school year?
Yes, sir.
Not, not, okay.
Not in the summer. Because in the summer, they're working, this year, they all work patrol.
Right, but if they're working during the school year, they're pretty much dedicated the entire time at school, correct?
Correct.
But during the school years, were, they're covering just 50%?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I want to get that clarification, have a better understanding.
That's it, that's. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item C is a discussion regarding the workforce transit. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I did want to provide a quick update to you all as well as seek input on the city's workforce transit program. I'll go more into the history in just a few minutes, but a quick update on our current contract. The city is currently in the 11th month of a 12-month interlocal agreement with Ditten County Transportation Authority to administer our workforce transit test program. Just to kind of explain the partnership, DCTA administers the contract and handles all of the administrative functions for the program for the city. And then LIV provides the first-mile, last-mile connectivity between designated transit stops and Capella businesses. The program is, the program is open to all Capella businesses and their employees. And then tonight, we need direction from city council to see if you are interested in renewing the interlocal agreement for another 12 months. And DCTA will also be seeking approval from their board to make sure that they're okay with renewing the contract as well. And if city council is agreeable to renewing this for another 12 months, we will bring back the ILA for full approval at one of your upcoming meetings. So now, just to provide a little history and background to the program. The city heard from employers that they were struggling to attract employees due to the lack of transport, public transportation in the City of Capella. We also lost some businesses that were considering Capella for their home due to a lack of transportation. And we were also concerned about retaining some of our current businesses due to a lack of public transportation. The other thing is that we witnessed employees riding a Dart bus to one of the transit stops in Irving and then walking by foot across 635 in order to get to their place of employment. and then walking by foot across 635 in order to get to their place of employment. And so we felt like we needed to find a solution for this first mile, last mile connection. So we researched what other cities with public, without public transportation, what they were doing to help their businesses both attract employees and solve the first mile, last mile connection for employees that were already utilizing public transportation. And after reviewing all the options, staff felt the best solution was to offer a test program that provided the most flexibility to both employers and employees to gauge the true needs for workforce transit in the future. And then we plan to use this data to determine what the long-term solution is for Cappell. After meeting with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, they suggested a partnership with the transit authority to create a test program that we're in right now. D C T A already had a partnership with LIFT and was willing to administer this program for us. And so that's where we pursued the interlocal agreement with, agreement with them in the beginning. The initial interlocal agreement ran from October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020. And we marketed the program to our Cappell businesses. And our program started pretty slow in the beginning, but began to gain momentum in December of 2019. Ridership was continuing to grow through March of 2020, which is when things shut down due to COVID. And so City Council has agreed to renew the I L A with D, with D C T A twice after the initial agreement. And so we've been using this time to gather the data to determine what our long-term solution is. Now, our current I L A, it began on October 1st of 2021 and will expire on September 30th of 2022, which is why if you all are agreeable to renewing it, we'll be bringing back the, the I L A at one of your next two meetings to get it passed before October 1st. Ridership data has grown every year since the program began in 2019. And a few things that we've learned, riders are coming from all six designated transit stops. Riders are traveling to a wide variety of businesses in Cappell. Riders are using the service seven days a week. And riders are no longer concentrated solely on the west side of town. When this first started, we felt like that all of the users were going to the west side of town, but now we are seeing it being utilized on the east side of town as well. And then finally, we do have Cappell residents that are also utilizing it just to get from their home to a place of employment within Cappell. You can see the chart here of the ridership data. We had a total of 1,392 rides in fiscal year 1920. That grew to 2,277 rides in 2021. And so far, we only have the measurement so far through nine months of this year. But through this year, we've already had 1,574 rides. But if the ridership trends continue as they have in the past years, we'll have over 2,300 total rides for this fiscal year. We have spent approximately $28,000 so far this fiscal year. And there's been a total expenditure of approximately $85,000 since the inception of this program. Again, we are requesting tonight to renew the contract for an additional 12 months so that we can continue to, the test program through September 30th of 2023. We've already included funds and this proposed budget to cover the cost. We would renew the program exactly as, as is that we have today. And so with that, if y'all are agreeable, we will bring back the third amended and restated interlocal agreement. It would extend the current contract by one year. All transit stops will remain the same, ridership costs will remain the same. And we'll continue to monitor ridership and cost for, for City Council consideration in the future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kevin?
Hey, Vinnie. No, thank you for that report. That's awesome. So you're confident that the $50,000 will cover any cost even if ridership continues to grow as the trends are shown?
I, I do believe it will for this next year. And then we can monitor next year to see if it's grown drastically from that. But I think for next year, it should cover us.
And then a follow-up to that, if, for whatever reason, if we just saw a massive spike in that, you would just come to us and say, programs while they're successful, we are asking, and then maybe we evaluate other, other options as well perhaps, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
As I recall, we set aside $100,000 for the first year.
That's correct. So we haven't even burned through all of our $100,000 thus far. So that's why we still have what's remaining on our contract. However, we still have to finish up this year and I just don't have the numbers through the last two months yet. But then we will, we have the $50,000 budgeted for this, or included in our budget for this next year as well.
And Councilmember Hill correctly predicted the east side ridership.
Well, hopefully we get some riderships. We'll get it built and they will come.
So do we have a breakdown of the businesses in Cappell that are utilizing this service?
Yes, sir. So we, we are making the businesses sign up. So it's not individual riders that are contacting us, it's the business that has to sign up to participate. So I have a list of all the businesses that are participating and I apologize, I did not bring that tonight. But we keep gaining businesses each year that are joining on. So we are also going to do a pretty big push again for this next year if, if, if we renew the contract, so.
And would it be businesses that we expected, big businesses, warehouses?
Yes, that's, that's predominantly who it is. However, we do have a few restaurants. We do have a few others that are utilizing it. I believe we have a grocery store. We have Cappell ISD that has been utilizing it also, so.
So it's helping the small businesses in Cappell?
Yes, sir.
Not just the?
Yes, sir.
Big megaphones.
John?
You might have mentioned this, but what's the end goal on this program?
So the, the goal in the beginning was that we would set up this test program so that we could kind of monitor to see if there is a true need. And if there's a true need, we would come up with a long-term solution at that point. Truthfully, I feel like that we'll see ridership increase dramatically once the silver lining is open.
So what kicked us off was feedback directly from the businesses that their hourly workers were struggling to get to work because they didn't, we didn't have local transit available for them. And it was feedback from those businesses that, that led to this whole study to, to see if it was a, was true and if it would be utilized.
Okay, then, go ahead.
So I just went to a transportation summit last weekend. That was one of the things they talked about, about the increase of population that's going to be coming to the North Texas area by, in the, in the next 20 years. And that's what they talked about, is the businesses especially are relocating from California and other places. That's one of their main criteria that they're looking for, is how their employees are going to be able to get to work. And so this puts us in a position to be able to answer the question. Even though we don't have public transit in Cappell, we have a solution for how we help them attract the employees. So we feel like there's potentially a different solution in the long term. But right now, we're still at the phase where we really need to gather the data to figure out what that is.
So to follow up on that, if there, if the businesses are seeing the need for programs such as this, are we going to get to a point where they're going to be funding?
I, I believe we will. And so that's, that's one of the things we actually talked about, that at this point, there's not a heavy concentration at any one business. So it makes it difficult to do that. But I do believe that we will start to see the point where we can figure out what the, what the cost is to the business in order to participate in this program.
So.
Well, I'm sorry, Kevin had his hand up after you.
Oh, I thought you were asking.
No. Just a question, are, do we have any way to track like the quality or the satisfaction of that first mile, last mile connection? Just kind of understanding like, is this a positive experience? You know, you, you get off a train or a bus and then you're waiting for the, the lift and how long does that take and stuff? Do we have any data about that?
So we have not done any type of survey, but that's something we certainly could survey the riders to see how it's going for them. But we do get emails from them directly that thanking the city for this opportunity. And part, part of it is because they, for a lot of people, for a lot of our businesses, the individuals that work here obviously don't live here, but they have similar options close to where they do live, but they want to work here. And so they appreciate the ability to, to be able to get here.
Has there been any feedback specifically from the businesses? I know, just kind of talk about the riders first, but anything from, from them?
Again, our, our businesses that are utilizing it are extremely appreciative, so.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
So John, I, I guess, you know, years ago, before anybody on this council, the decision was made not to be a part of Dart. So we can't get into Dart now. I mean, it just, it, it wouldn't make sense. And I don't even know if they would accept us at this point. But if we were a part of Dart and we had the mass transit, Michael was saying that they would take the one cent tax that we have, which is about $10 million. So this $50,000 that we're paying to help get workers here versus man's mass transit is, is not a bad deal, in my opinion.
Well, I just think that if they see a need, then they should be funding some. And it's great helping businesses, but I was just trying to see at what point are we going to continue this? Funding every year coming back, coming back, or at some, at what point are we going to try to get that passed on to the businesses that actually utilizes the odds? But it's part of their expense.
Just a comment on that is, you know, I kind of look at that, if we have to pitch in 50 grand a year to have that be a retention tool for millions of dollars in revenue for the city, I think that that's a, that's an easy trade-off, in my opinion, on that. So I think, I mean, I don't want to be dismissive of $50,000, but if that, just like we talked before, if that does make sure that we're retaining certain big businesses, I'll do that deal all day long.
So are you prepared at all to talk about some of the other options that we have in the future? Especially some of the things that the Smart Cities Board is looking at?
We, we really have not sat down to look at that yet. I mean, I know we've talked about autonomous vehicles, there are several fixed route buses. There are several things that we've talked about, but we're not at a point today that I think that we're ready to really explore those yet. So that's why we are continuing this program so that we continue to gather data and get those trends to see patterns.
So, Bichu?
Yeah, thank you for the updates, Mindy. Can you go back to the graphs?
Sure.
So let's take an example of this year, 2,319. Do we know how many users are using this, out of this 2,319?
They break down, and again, I apologize, I didn't bring that, but yes, they break down how many unique riders there are. So we get that every month.
Okay. Do you see pattern, similar, same people using it every month?
I, I don't know specifically who it is, so I can't tell you if it's the same, you know, 50 people using it. It just shows you unique, that there are unique riders. So, and I can bring that data at a later time on how many unique riders there are on a monthly basis. But I apologize, I didn't include that.
You know, which direction, you know, point A to point B? Is it from 635 that you said somebody had to walk to Amazon building? Is that where the most utilization is or where exactly is the utilization?
So that's where we had it broken down by the west versus the east. And so the west is clearly still the predominant user, but it is growing on the east side as well.
So you will provide us that data later?
We can certainly bring that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that is changing in the, in the transportation world is the technology is really changing quickly in terms of, of what's happening. And that was what we discussed back when we kicked this thing off, what, several years ago?
Yeah.
And the, the, as Mindy mentioned, the, the, uh, automatic vehicles are one thing. Fixed route, self-driving buses could be another. I mean, there's all sorts of different things that we were, we actually looked in doing, you know, bus ridership in town and decided we didn't want to spend money on that one because that gets pretty expensive. So the, you know, in my view, this is, even though we're still calling it a pilot program, it's not a bad thing to be doing at this point because it does meet the need. It keeps the businesses coming back. It gives our employees that are coming in from out of town ridership. Have, just subjectively, has the, the, got people walking across the street from the rail stations on foot? Has that ceased?
I don't know if it's ceased completely, but it's definitely declined, so.
And you said, you might have mentioned this, but out of the 23 expected ridership, how many businesses?
I, I don't have that list with me. I'd have to go back and count how many we have that are in the program, signed up for the program right now.
And you would have the breakdown as to how many there are actually? I mean, what percentage of the business employees are using?
Don?
I think that, I think it's a good, I think it's a good program to have. And, and here's where I've sort of evolved on this a little bit. Mobility is like one of the biggest economic drivers everywhere. And I even listened to, we have some, you know, neighboring towns that are in Dart and they have this first mile, last mile issue, and they have public transportation in town. So they, they are also struggling with this. And so I find it, I think it's great that the city is, you know, taking the initiative to go down this pilot program to try to somewhat solve this. All you have to do is look at the spring of 2020 to see what, if the government stopped mobility and you see what the impact was economically broadly. So the opposite of that is, the more you increase mobility, it ought to be an economic driver. So I think, you know, looking to try to solve this problem as much as possible is great. And the fact that we, you know, to this point, is we've been, limited funds has had to been spent. I think it's a great program, so I think we ought to certainly should extend it for another year and see where it goes and where we can evolve this into the future. And I would love to be able to share with some of our other councils across the Metroplex on first mile, last mile, this is what we've done that seems to be working. I think that's a great thing we can share.
You know a method of doing that?
I do. I do. So I heard, yeah, a relatively large city in the Metroplex that, right in the middle of Dart. And I heard a council member talking about first mile, last mile. They don't know how to solve it and they, and you know, I would have never thought they had that problem if they had Dart all over town, but it's a challenge. So I'm attempting to be more vocal in some of those meetings on, this is what we're doing. So I think it's a great example.
One of the Dart employees that moved in from California, didn't have a car in California, moved here, working for Dart, didn't think they were going to need a car here. And after about six weeks realized the, the last mile delivery was, was, she needed a car.
Right. Well, I, I just think it's really crucial people understand mobility really is a huge, huge driver of economic activity. And I think it's understated because it's usually not a problem. But where it's a problem, it really hampers economic ability, economic activity for the community as well as for individuals. I mean, it, it limits economic mobility upwards also for them, so.
John?
Mindy, you mentioned earlier that you were going to look into trying to see at some point, the businesses contribute, making the contributions? What are you talking about, two years, three years?
So one of the things we have not been able to do up to this point is have a unique code for each business. So I can't tell you how many riders are going to each specific business. So D C T A is working on that right now with us. So as we get those numbers and get a little more clarity on specifically how many are going to each business, that will help us to be able to determine potentially, if, if we want to ask the businesses to share in the cost, how we, how we divide that up fairly, so.
And how long would that take for you to kind of get that idea as to the data?
To get the code set up or to?
Yeah.
Well, we're dependent completely on D C T A and LIFT right now, but they have been actively working on that. So they're trying to get that established. So a year will certainly help us, but it, it may not be enough for us to figure it out completely, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Hurley? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then I will bring back that I am late.
Item D is a discussion regarding the draft memorial policy. Ms. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jessica Carpenter, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'm here this evening to discuss the draft policy for the donation of monuments and memorials to be placed on. for the donation of monuments and memorials to be placed on city property. I brought forth this topic to the council quite a bit of time ago. During this discussion, council had some recommendations, and those were to want to update the existing policy that the Parks and Recreation Department had in place regarding just kind of how we outlined accepting and allowing for just standard memorial park benches in the park system. So, that's pretty much what that policy dictated. And so, council's direction was to update that policy and include guidelines to potentially allow for other types of memorials and monuments to be placed in the park system. During this time, council also requested that the park board be involved with the development of this policy. I went to the Parks and Recreation Board over the span of a few meetings and provided the background and information on this topic. The board then made recommendations and developed the draft that you have this evening. This policy has also been reviewed by city attorneys. So, tonight I'll try to provide a brief overview of some of the key points regarding this policy and ask for any feedback that you may have. So, when drafting this policy, the board started with drafting some application criteria or expanding upon the additional application criteria that we had in place. So, they looked at criteria from a policy that a neighboring city had formed as well as what, you know, makes sense for Capel. So, this includes timelines, insurance requirements, and kind of specifications and descriptions of the proposed donation. The board then considered some criteria for the donation. So, they, the board fully agreed with council's feedback and recommendation that the donation should benefit the park-going community and have a direct tie to the city of Capel. So, that was kind of expanded upon to state that should have a direct tie to the city of Capel, a current or former citizen, business owner, or volunteer. Then the board discussed the approval process. So, the first review of the application, so a person wants to donate a monument, memorial bench of any kind to the park system, the first review will be done internally with Parks and Recreation staff. And then it will be sent to the park board for review if needed. So, basically what that means is I'll look at the application or my team will look at the application. If it's anything outside of just our very standard park bench that you see there, then I will forward it on to the Parks and Recreation Board for review. So, the board agreed that if it's just an individual family wanting to honor their loved one with our standard pre-approved park bench, that we're just going to go ahead and do that internally as staff, and anything else will forward on to the board for review. So, yes, all other applications that fall outside of that standard bench will be forwarded to the board. The board will review the application and all criteria and supporting documentation, including reviewing a perpetual maintenance agreement if needed for that specific donation. And then they'll make a determination on whether or not to approve and accept the donation of this memorial or monument. So, the Parks and Recreation Board, they're very informed on both the current and future development plans, goals, vision for the entire park system as a whole. So, they're definitely equipped to sort of make determinations on these types of requests. So, again, some key highlights in the policy. Again, the Parks and Recreation Board is recommended to be the approval entity for these types of requests. Some of their decision criteria will include an exact location. So, we have quite a large park system, five hundred and forty-four acres. So, there's lots of different options for things to go and get placed. So, their decision criteria would need to include kind of an exact location. Also, what future planning and development the park system might there be? So, the Parks and Recreation Board, as you may be aware, annually prioritizes a project priority list. And so, this is a list of anything from trail connections to playground replacements, to splash pads, to additional pickleball courts. And so, the board is very well versed on kind of the plans and the goals and the vision for what might need to be in the park system as we grow and as we redevelop our park system. And then, overall, the most important thing, and that's how the policy begins, the board is really looking and committed to preserving the overall aesthetics of this community, realizing that the aesthetics of our park system, our medians, our green spaces really make our community special. So, again, this evening is just to receive any feedback that you may have regarding the draft policy. The goal would be to bring the actual policy back to the next council meeting for approval. Should you have any changes? If not, we can, I can come back again and we can work through it again if needed. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
John?
Jessica for the presentation. Couple of questions I have is, on the criteria, I guess C1, it talks about the criteria for the donation of the project, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to get a clarification. It says the project or donation must have a direct tie to the city of Capel, a current or former Capel citizen. So, if, does that mean a current or former Capel citizen requests the project or donation, is that, does that give them sufficient ties or how?
So, that really refers to, you know, a lot of times folks will want to bring forth options for memorials and monuments for somebody who's passed away. And so, kind of how we do that now with the memorial park benches, it's somebody that lived in Capel, or it's a Capel family. Somebody in the family has passed and want to honor their loved one who may have used that specific park. And so, the board wanted to really treat any other additional requests similarly, knowing that that monument needs to be tied to a Capel citizen in some way, particularly a family.
The second question I had is, if you go to the approval process, C1, it says the director of Parks and Recreation will review and approve or forward to the park and park board rec. So, does that mean that if you approve, it does not go to the board at all for review?
Good question. I do need to clarify that. That is relating to just the standard park benches. So, those are the ones that I will approve and just work with the family one-on-one to get that bench purchased and placed into the proper spot. Anything beyond that will just go straight to the board for review. So, staff will not have any say-so or any review or approval during that time. I would then review and just forward that application on to the park board. So, then the park board would meet and review that application within the next two meetings.
Okay, so you don't actually make the decision, approval or disapproval at that point?
No, unless it, unless it's just the standard park bench, yeah.
Okay. And then, just the final question, which is, you're, on the three, on number three, it says that the board's decision is final and there's no further appeal. That is the, is that how it's been to this day?
No, this would be new relating to this policy. So, again, the Parks and Recreation Board does make sense to be the entity to kind of really approve these requests. They're the most intimately connected with kind of the plans for the park system, what makes sense for the park system. They're the entity that approves and hears feedback from the community at every meeting. And so, I have faith in them that they would make the appropriate determination. So, when it says no further appeal, that doesn't mean that the applicant can't reapply. That doesn't mean that the board might not ask for more information. So, more than likely, in C2, it kind of outlines that a little bit more. I would assume that the board would want to probably have a meeting or two to request additional information, especially if they're looking toward not approving. I would think that they would explore that further.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Bichu?
Thank you, Jessica, for the update. Question A is, five hundred and forty acres you mentioned, does that include cemetery?
That does include the cemetery property, yes.
Does this policy apply there?
It does not. So, Gary Decker, our cemetery manager, he's going to do everything internally. Since literally his whole property is memorials and monuments, quite a different approach there. So, that's not a part of this policy. That's a great clarification.
Don?
On B1, clarification again to make sure, understand. So, the project or donation has to have a direct tie to a citizen of Capel. But we're talking about, let me think how to say it. Whatever is being honored or remembered has to be what has to have the direct tie to Capel, is that right?
Correct.
You couldn't have like a citizen who happens to live here but wants to?
Right.
Honor, remember whatever, something that's unrelated to Capel. Does that, does that make any sense?
Yes.
It's not just enough to live in Capel, that the memorial needs to have a tie?
The memorial itself has to honor or remember?
Something directly, okay.
The thing that is tied to Capel.
Okay. I just want, reading through it, it was, I just want to make sure that was clear that that's what, that's sort of what we're looking at.
John?
So, just to follow up, but that's the same question I asked. I think it'd be, a clarification would be better.
Okay. Yeah, I can clarify that statement. That's great that you did.
So, what's the criteria? I know that you covered ongoing maintenance costs and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
But suppose the board approves, I can't even, I'm not even going to be able to think of what it would be, but something that requires a substantial base that we typically install. What's the criteria for deciding that go, no go on something like that?
So, part of the application process, so in my initial review, just to make sure that they're going to have all the information, the board will have all the information they need to make the appropriate determination. In my first review, I'll make sure that the application is accompanied by drawings of the proposed monument or memorial, all the specifications, descriptions, that will describe the exact location, exact size, materials, colors, the size of the structure. We're also asking that if it's a structure that you said it's going to have to need a base, it's, the structure is going to be large. We're asking for drawing sealed by a Texas-registered engineer on that as well. And then, also proper building permits, which will come after the preliminary approval. But we're just want to make sure, if we're proposing construction to take place in the park system, we're going to need a lot of information.
And we're going to be doing the, the donor wouldn't be doing the construction, we would be, is that correct?
So, we would work with the donor on that. So, they would obviously financially would be backing all that. The city would be there every step of the way.
Oh, so the donor actually backs the installate, or the cost?
Correct. They would pay for one hundred percent of the cost of purchasing, placing, and maintaining the monument or memorial. So, I think it was really important to, as we, as we worked through drafting this policy, knowing, you know, the city's resources and things, everything that's placed in the park system, we definitely can't maintain in perpetuity. So, we would want to make sure that the person who wants to donate whatever it is can maintain that. With the exception of the memorial park benches, once the family buys those, we do maintain those. Those are pretty robust, though. They don't require a lot of maintenance. So, those are ones that we're okay with taking on that cost.
Thank you.
So, I have a question about the bench.
John?
Yes.
I realized you guys are trying to limit, I guess the wording, it just says eight by twelve made metal and so forth on the lettering. But is that basically where anyone that just wants to donate a bench for in memory of somebody, they do, and you just put that in there?
Yeah.
And there's no information about who that person is or anything like that?
So, so basically, the family will prove on a standard park bench, they'll say, I'd really love the plaque to say this. And we, they just run it by us just to make sure it's nothing that's not acceptable for anybody to read. But really, we work with the family one-on-one. So, most of them say just in memorial of John Smith, who passed away, you know, and was a lover of Capel parks or something like that.
I just heard this.
We're flexible on that.
Well, because I sometimes want to know who that person, who I saw. And I just thought, there's no information, and how do we go about, there's this?
Agreed. This is what, we actually kept this, this wording from our original policy that we developed in two thousand and four, knowing that it's, again, it's reviewed on a case-by-case basis. And if people want to veer off the script, that's allowable.
Kevin?
I hate bringing this up because I feel like I'm talking myself in a circle on this. But C3, it talks about the denial by the Parks and Rec Board. And here's a hypothetical. If council as a whole, you know, we would say like, hey, we want this type of memorial. According to this, we have to kick it down to Parks and Rec Board for approval. And let's say that they don't approve it. And I know I'm hypothetically, and I apologize for doing that. But what is the mechanism? Obviously, I mean, we're council, and we want this to happen.
So, we would consider that a city request. So, I'm going to use a veterans' memorial as an example. I know council has discussed that in the past. So, this would not, veterans' memorial would not apply. So, what we would do, we would treat that as a regular park project. So, actually, veterans' memorial is on the park project priority list. It's already been prioritized as a project to go into the park system. So, while it is a memorial and monument, because it's a city-funded project, it doesn't apply to this donation policy, so.
That, that clears that up. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And sorry for talking tonight.
No, that's okay. I'd rather you ask the question.
Was the board pretty positive on this?
They were. They were happy to be included. They, again, they are the most eligible about just the requests and the planning and development. And so, they were, they were excited to be involved in the process. And so, you know, we have a couple of pending requests. You know, everything from, I want a bench, but I don't want that bench. And so, that would go through this policy. So, we have a couple of families that will be excited to hear that this is on its way.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
I will make those, I will clarify that wording. And so, when you see this policy again, that will be clarified. So, I'll work on that. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jessica. Okay, item E, discussion regarding our twenty-two, twenty-three work plan. Ms. Leach?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tracy Leach, Deputy City Manager. Can you all hear me okay?
No.
Just kidding.
Okay. Okay, because I can't take this off, but then it's completely defeating the level.
Well, I am, sir.
So, I am here tonight to present to you the draft of the work plan for the upcoming fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a, kind of the last step in the planning process and preparation for next year. And all of this work began back in January with the council prioritization exercise that you all went through for the Vision twenty forty goals and pillars. And so, the document that is included in your packet represents all of the goals that were identified as the highest-rated goals for this upcoming year. And essentially, what we as the staff have done over this past year, post-January, is we spend time in conversation with our staffs on developing what is the next step to continue making progress for the goals that are identified in this work plan in front of you. A couple of things to note, a lot of what is in the proposed plan, much of that work plan for next year is kind of the next iteration, kind of the implementation phase of items that were in our current year work plan that we're kind of closing up as we end this current fiscal year. And so, many of the things are just a continuation as we keep moving forward to implement some of the goals that the council has identified over the past several years. I am not asking for any decisions tonight. So, this is not a presentation around approval. This is if you have any questions to clarify any of the information that is included in the packet, I'm happy to do that. Our intent is to bring this back in September for you to formally approve so that we can then begin work starting October one with the new fiscal year. So, with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you guys might have in terms of clarity and that sort of thing related to the draft that's in front of you.
John?
On the, the pillar five, the support the old-town area and concept?
Yes.
The pop-up retail, what does that entail?
So, that actually is in, on our ARPA list in terms of projects that we had identified for funding for ARPA, knowing that that was going to be kind of the second phase of business support. And essentially, what that is, pop-up retail. So, if you're familiar with some of the designers, so clothing designers or purses, or they'll have like the Stranger Things exhibit that just popped up at Grapevine Mills. Those are all examples of pop-up retail. And so, those are things that, it can take many different forms. So, it can be something where we would lease space and then allow kind of startup businesses who just need like three or six months to try to see, prove a concept. It can literally be, hey, we're recruiting people to come into existing spaces and work with an existing landlord. So, there's a lot of different options for how that can be structured. We're kind of in the very preliminary phases of looking at what that is because right now, our focus, I will be honest, is on implementing the business support programs on rent and mortgage assistance as well as our revenue recovery. But this is the next iteration. We'll be, we'll be looking at this very closely once we get into this fiscal year.
So, the retail is not, it doesn't extend to such as like people that want to try out or vendors as some sort of food?
Yeah, it certainly can.
Okay.
Startup restaurants, it can be proving out different types of concepts altogether. So, yeah, it's, it is intended to be flexible. It's intended to be high turnover so that the community has an opportunity to experience a lot of different options. And it gives those, the startup businesses, an opportunity that they may not otherwise have because it would be part of that, we've put a budget together. So, it would be a subsidized opportunity that would allow, allow a business to kind of see what that might look like. that might look like.
Is it similar to back in the days when we used to have the Fourth of July at Andy Brown, we had tents of people, variety of people running the booth and selling a variety of things? Does that, does that seem a concept?
Now, this would be more, a more, I did say it would be fluid. But it would be more structured just in terms of location options and that sort of thing, parameters around, you know, how we would need to kind of vet folks coming in. So it is a little bit different than just opening up, you know, vendor booth opportunities at, at some of our special events. That's also an option, though.
Well, it just, it gives them, I think I mentioned this before, where it gives the opportunity for them to kind of taste, you know, to test the market.
Sure.
And if that's an opportunity for them to test the market and to see what kind of, you know, response they get from the community, that would be a great opportunity to provide that so that maybe they see that opportunity. And maybe it could be an ongoing base, businesses to attract, you know, people there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Everybody's still reading it. So just keep in mind, as soon as this one gets implemented, we start on the next year. So.
And we'll probably in September have a, close up the, well, actually, that'll be in October when we come out and close up the current year work plan.
So I, one more comment. Where they actually had those similar type of event, pop-up retail, where they had that, I've been to places where they had consistently, whether it be, you know, weekends or some months of the year, whatever it is, they've attracted a lot of people to that area because you provide opportunity for a lot of various vendors to be there. And that gives them opportunity to see what's around that area, especially the Old Town. So.
So are you thinking of something like a farmer's market instead of having farmers produce and be a vendor that would come to?
Correct. Right.
So I've seen that, that Austin had that on Sixth Street. Then during, once or, they'd only do it once or twice a year, but they'd have a big festival.
Yeah, but, or they do it longer, right? They do it two, you know, two, three months on the weekends, or some people even go extreme, they do it throughout, throughout the week too. But that kind of gives them a, you know, it attracts like people from surrounding cities. And that gives them, them opportunity to see what's down at the Old Town. So.
And the great news is, we don't have, we don't have a fleshed-out program, so all of this feedback is great.
Anybody have anything else? You've got to be dying to say something.
If you want to put it that way.
No, no, this isn't for me. It's, there's all kinds of possibilities, you know. It'll be interesting to delve into that.
Thank you, sir.
See, you come at your day.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the time is 6:30, 6:43 PM, and we are adjourned from the work session. We'll move into the council chamber for our regular session at 7:30. So you said you've got a meeting from 4 to 5?
Howdy, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, August 23rd. The time is 7:30 PM, and we're moving into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list their address of residence. Did we have anybody signed up for a little bit later? Ms. Ashley?
It looks like we will. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, our invocation is going to be given by Councilmember Don Carroll, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Father, we come before you tonight just thanking you for this day. We thank you for the rain, how you have replenished our land as we have moved through this weather cycle. We, we thank you for keeping us safe. And we pray for those that have been impacted from the floods nearby, our neighbors that have been impacted. We pray that you will provide them safe passage and, and help. And Father, we ask that you will open our eyes to ways that we can help others in nearby communities. Father, we just ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. We ask that emotions and feelings will be calm, that there will be peace in this chamber. And we thank you for this community that you have provided. And we thank you for our neighbors that you have provided and how you have put us together to live together, to work together, and to play together. Father, we just thank you for always taking care of us. And, and we ask for your blessing upon this evening. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Item number five is annual report by Span. I'd like to invite Ms. Diane Beck to please come forward.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'm here with my finance director over there, Melanie Boutwell. So any finance questions, you can divert to her. And I'm Diane Beck. I'm the Mobility Manager for Span, Inc. Meals on Wheels of Denton County. We're a nonprofit established in 1974, and we enable people in Denton County and also in Capella because we do transportation here to live as fully and independently as possible. We provide nutrition, transportation to seniors, disabled, and veterans. And we also supply pet supplies to our clients that are in need. Last year, and Judge Andeeds delivers every meal, but last year, we delivered over 109,000 meals. And this is just for informational, for you because we don't do meals in Capella because only Denton County. But it's informational, just an overview. And we had over 100, 1,095 clients. And all clients receive five hot meals. So we are back to five hot meals per week. And in 2021, we added over 300 new clients and trained over 100 new volunteers. Those are just our site managers. And through our Senior Paws Program, we deliver pet food once a month to the homebound clients. And it's almost all dependent on donations from the community. Now, this is the part that is really pertains to your organization and your city. And it's, we're a demand response scheduled program that provides shared rides to Denton County and Capella residents. And the passenger fare is $3 each way. And these are some of the approved trip purposes, medical, shopping for necessities, public libraries, senior programs, employment, education, nutrition, recreation, and workshop. Our drivers, we have very experienced drivers, and they really are one-on-one with the client. They deliver the message of hope and are often the only visitor that person will see in a day. And they are specially trained, and they go through a rigorous hiring process. And we do annual driving background and criminal checks on them. And safety is our top, top, top priority. We have approximately 30 vehicles, and all are equipped for wheelchair accessibility and accommodating special need people. Audio and video recording capabilities to offer security for our clients and staff. Now, our mechanics have won awards for their safety and everything that they do. So they've actually won awards. And we have two very experienced mechanics that service our vehicles. And our vehicles go through regular internal and external safety inspections, and they're cleaned and fobbed daily for full sanitation. Now, in fiscal year 2021, we provided 340 transportation trips to Capella residents. And normally, that would be asking money back from the city. However, this year is similar to last year. Because of CARES Act funding, we don't have to ask for anything for transportation from your city. So therefore, because we don't do meals in your city, we don't ask Capella this year for any funding due to CARES Act. We expect it to cover. Thank you. And any questions from the mayor or council? I have my finance person here, so.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Council, any questions? Councilmember June?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a question. On the, you said 340 trips in Capella, how many residents does that equate to?
It's approximately 35.
35?
Yeah. 35 clients.
And do you see the number actually growing every year? Or how is it this year?
It was growing. It was growing until COVID hit. And then it took a real deep dive, and it's starting to slowly come back up. But unfortunately, a lot of our clients are elderly, and they have passed away. And, or, you know, they're afraid to use our services because of social distancing. Even though we do, do social distancing, they're just afraid because of the whole pandemic thing that has, you know, wiped out some people. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. And, and thank you for assisting our residents. We really do appreciate it.
Well, it's, it's our pleasure. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Item number six is an update by the Capella Arts Center Foundation. Mr. Greg Goine. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Make sure I'm working this right. So I'm, I'm here along with Jim Walker, who's our Vice President. And the other, the rest of the executive team is Pamela Gaines and also Wayne Williams, who's our Treasurer. We also have another nine board members that aren't listed, but are, it's a great team. And I wanted to kind of share with you a little bit about what we've accomplished in the last year. And as you know, we've, we're just in the second year. So we're still kind of in startup mode, still, still building momentum. But I thought it'd be helpful to kind of give you a little show and tell about what the last year is, you know, comprised of. So first of all, the one and the only thing that we're focused on is ensuring the success of the Arts Center. That makes it simple. It's simple, but it's not necessarily easy. It is something that we are completely 100% focused on though. Second of all, you've seen these before perhaps, but what we consider to be our four pillars center around cultivate, which is really about fundraising and cultivating those funds. It's hard to read on the screen. But the second would be elevate. That's tapping into the experience of our board members to help elevate and support and lift up the, the Arts Center staff. It's about activating. In other words, we're volunteering to help, you know, it's a very small staff that runs the Arts Center. So we're there to help support them through our volunteer efforts as well. And last, it's to advocate through, through our social networks, through our spheres of influence, doing what we can to help spread the good word about the, about the Arts Center and make sure that it's viewed positively and accurately in the community. So just a little bit quickly about some of the events that have gone on in the last year. We've initiated what we, what we consider to be a signature event. We're in our second year. It's the Dog Days Fashion Show and Adoption Event. If you've ever seen the movie Best in Show, it's kind of that type of an event. We have a couple comedians, one on the board and one professional comedian that host it. But it's a great, a great event. Camp Boutwell's been our sponsor for the last two years. We've had about 330 people attend, 24 participants. And we have multiple adoption organizations involved this year. It also was a project for our team board, which we started this year at the request of Brad Hunt. And it's been exciting to have about a half dozen high school students involved. It got their volunteer hours in. And also, this gave them a project to kind of own and, and make their own. Next, we've also developed some partnerships. We worked very closely with the Rotary Club to cover the tickets for some students from local elementary schools to attend one of the Merry Circle Christmas performances. We've also partnered with the Capella Aggie Moms Club and the A&amp;M Club as well to bring in the, the Singing Cadets. And that was a great event in early January. It brought in a lot of people that had never been to the Arts Center before. We had, in fact, Mayor, you, you emceed or at least opened it. And I think we asked the question, who's, you know, who hadn't been here before, who was the first time at the Arts Center? And I think virtually the entire audience raised their hand. We also brought in through, because of a $30,000 restricted gift that we were able to get from the from the White King Foundation, we created a front and center speaker series in conjunction with the Arts Center staff. We brought in celebrity chef Carla Hall, who did a Sunday night series, or Sunday night engagement. We also brought in NFL player and hometown hero Solomon Thomas, who he and his dad gave a great presentation in April. If you've been in the Arts Center lately, you may have seen this great piece of art, which is the donor wall. It's now complete. It's got 100 names of local Capellians or citizens that helped, you know, support the Arts Center early on. And we completed it in June. We raised over $125,000 that we're very proud of. And we also held a successful donor appreciation event in July to thank all the folks that got involved early on to help support the Arts Center. Next on the agenda is we just launched an annual membership program. So you may have seen an email if you were one of our early donors, that we've been posting about this on social as well. And we did some, a community survey beforehand to make sure we were including perks that the community felt were important. We have three individual membership levels and three corporate levels, and we've already got a nice start on memberships there as well. And you can always find more information at capellacenter.org/membership. I won't try to read all of the members, membership perks, but I will say, just highlighting, it includes things like a monthly newsletter, priority pre-sale window for upcoming shows, a concierge service for tickets. So if you want to exchange tickets at the last minute to another show, assuming there's availability, that's available as well. Includes complimentary drinks. There's an annual member meeting, which is something we got, we picked up in the survey that people wanted to have the opportunity to give some feedback. So once a year, we're going to have an annual meeting where we can present the results from the previous season and get feedback for the coming season. Includes things like backstage tours and meet and greets when they're available, discounts on rentals, as well as tickets to our gala. Now, you may be asking yourself, what gala? I didn't know there was a gala. Well, it's because this is the first year of our gala. And that's, you now have a little bit of an inside scoop. It's happening October 22nd, Saturday night at the Arts Center. We're taking over the whole Arts Center, and it's going to be a great event. The dress code is Rat Pack Chic, and there's even a combo VIP ticket where you can attend both the art sip and stroll the weekend before, as well as the gala on the 22nd. So it's kind of like Arts Week in Capella. And tickets are going on sale this week. In fact, the page on the website is live today. So if anybody's interested in going and grabbing your tickets before they sell out, I encourage you to do that right away. And the last slide I have is really just about our upcoming priorities. We're continuing, you know, to ensure the success of CAC operations. We, in fact, just approved another $30,000 grant for the Arts Center this year, and that's to help them get the word out about upcoming performances and make sure we're building awareness of the Arts Center in surrounding communities as well. We're working closely with the resident art groups to make sure they're successful because their home is there at the Arts Center. And we're looking forward to other development activities, like for next year, we might launch a seatback campaign. We're continuing to raise money through, or, you know, spreading the word about these donations and our membership opportunities through our friends and social networks. And then we're also trying to implement things like a donor platform to make the board as successful as possible, and make sure we're cultivating those relationships of those donors who got in early. And last but not least, I'll just say thank you. And if anybody has any questions or information, they can always contact me through the, through the email there or through our, through our website, capellaartscenterfoundation.com or .org. That's all I had. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions, counsel? I've got one just at a high level. You know, you've been through the first year. What worked well and what didn't work well? And what are you going to change to capture your successes?
Well, we're still in startup mode, so I think we're still in learning mode, and I hope we stay in learning mode for some time to come. But I'd say, you know, the donor wall was a success. It didn't happen quite as quickly as we thought it would. With pandemic and everything else, it took, gosh, probably a full year to get that sold. But I think beyond that, you know, trying things like the speaker series. You know, granted, we had some hiccups along the way. We had to reschedule each of them a couple times, but just trying to kind of sort out and figure out what the sweet spot is for our community and for, you know, what patrons are interested in. You know, they were, probably weren't as well attended as we would have liked. We probably filled up half the auditorium, so we would have liked to have gotten the word out, and maybe we can find, as time goes on, finds, you know, those types of events that will really expand our reach. So things like that, I think are, you know, each, each one we do, we learn something from.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of which, how are you getting the words out?
Well, we're helping to support, you know, the advertising campaign that the Arts Center staff already hasn't, you know, already had planned and with the agencies they have involved. So part of that is helping to fund that, so they, you know, can kind of put a deeper budget against that. But also through social networks, Facebook, Twitter, trying to get the word out through all our, through the current donors, as well as members and patrons of the Arts Center.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and looking forward to another season.
All right.
Okay, item number seven is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address of residence. Each speaker must state his or her name and their residence address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with approval of the majority of the council. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will break in and make the requests to the mayor and council if they'd like to extend the speaker's time to an additional two minutes. This evening, we had one speaker sign up to speak, and that's Ms. Jennifer Martinez. Thank you for coming tonight. Please state your name and address.
Hi, thank you. Jennifer Martinez, 120 South Denton Tap Road, Suite 310, Capella, Texas, 75019. Sorry, I forgot the zip code momentarily. I just wanted to speak to you guys briefly in regards to the recovery grant, the revenue recovery grant. I wanted to really urge you to reconsider lifting the qualification. If you're a membership-based business, you don't qualify. I don't understand how you can say that because you're a membership-based business, you don't have an impact, because we most definitely do. All businesses actually have an impact by the construction. We're a boutique gym in particular for Nine Round, which that difference of a boutique gym versus a big box gym, for those that may not understand that, would be my gym has 100 members at best, where a big box gym like Anytime Fitness or Lifetime Fitness is about 2,500. So any impact to my business has a huge impact on, on my organization and keeping it prospering, especially during the COVID impact. We're trying to rebuild monumentally from just that alone. We lost probably roughly 60% of our members just, just from COVID that we're trying to rebuild on during this time. We were trying to figure out when we started to receive a lift with new potential members coming in and having a, a lot more members coming in from feeling comfortable. I'm getting close to the two-minute time. Could I get an extra two minutes? Okay. We were trying to figure out why it started to go back in the opposite direction, and that stemmed from looking at our members that most likely were not coming in or from potential first-time workouts that scheduled. A lot of those were in the Cypress Waters area, and when we reached out, a lot of them said they just were struggling to get there because of the construction inconvenience. Some also said they went onto the website, and it told them to find alternative routes and had a big crane, so they decided to not come to Nine Round Capella, and they went to Nine Round Los Colinas instead. Some of our members have either frozen and/or canceled, which is revenue for me. So it's not only just my business in particular. Any business that has an impact to the construction in that area would definitely have an impact. So from that reason, I was just asking to please reconsider lifting that membership-based requirement because we're definitely still feeling an impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, for your consideration. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number eight.
A through E?
A through E.
Thank you. Have a second by Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long, he notes a Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor and unopposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number nine is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and introduce Ms. Kim Tean to read the item.
Thank you. To receive public comment on the proposed 2023, 2022, 2023 budget for the Capella Crime Control and Prevention District. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, I would like just to take a moment to introduce some staff members that are with me this evening. We have Jerry Young. He's a business analyst and has been here for about 16 days. We have Tamara Smith, who you do know, she's our budget officer. We have Jessica Almendares. She is our budget analyst, and she has been here about 16 days. Jerry Benatatos, he's our utility billing manager. And then we have Vanessa Tarver. She's our controller, and she's been with us for about eight months. So we have a pretty new staff. And I just want to thank them for joining us this evening. So this evening, we do have three public hearings. All three are related to the proposed 2022, 2023 budget and the property tax rate, and this is the first of the three, which is on the Crime Control and Prevention District's budget. As required by Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code, the governing body that created the Crime Control and Prevention District shall hold a public hearing on the budget adopted by the Crime Control Board. The Board held a public meeting on May 24th of 2022. No citizens signed up to speak. The public hearing was closed, and the Board approved the proposed budget. Before I present the control, Crime Control District budget, I would like to provide some history and background on the Crime Prevention District. This is a separate entity that is governed, again, by Local Government Code, Section 363. As a separate entity, the district is governed by a board of seven members, which is currently the voting members of the Capella City Council. The district receives revenue from the one-quarter of 1% sales tax. The election for the sales tax originally passed in November of 2007, and the district began collecting tax in April of 2008. The initial time period was for five years, which would have expired in April of 2013, but in November of 2011, the sales tax was reauthorized for an additional 10-year period. With a new expiration date of April of 2023, for the district to continue, the next vote must take place on or before November of 2022. Council did approve a resolution, resolution on July 26th of 2022, ordering a special election to be held on November 8th to reauthorize the local sales and use tax of one-quarter of 1% to continue providing crime prevention, crime reduction programs for a 10-year period. Since the one-quarter of 1% sales tax is restricted or committed to expenditures for a specific purpose, the Crime Control Prevention District is considered a special revenue fund of the City of Capella. So now that you have some background and history on the Crime Control and Prevention District, I'd like to move to presenting the district's proposed budget. The total crime control and prevention district revenues are projected to be about $3.6 million for the next fiscal year. Sales tax is the primary source of the revenue for this fund and is estimated to be at about $3.3 million, or about 91.5% of the total revenues. As I previously mentioned, the district does receive the quarter, one-quarter of 1% of total sales tax received by the city. We do continue to budget sales tax as if the rule 3.334 is in effect, those changes. And based on additional analysis and rising prices, we did budget an increase in sales tax revenue. The remaining revenue is from salary reimbursement and the interest income, which totals $308,750, or almost 8.5% of the revenues that are budgeted. The salary reimbursement category is what the city will receive from Capella ISD for the School Resource Officer Program, and that was the ILA related to SROs that was on the consent agenda item this evening. Expenditures for the Crime Control and Prevention District are projected to be 3.3 for the next fiscal year. The district funds the School Resource Officer Program, community police cooperation programs such as National Night Out, the Women's Self-Defense, and the Citizens Police Academy. It funds the North Texas Emergency Communication Center, which is our dispatch center that we share with Carrollton Farmers Branch in Addison. It funds the jail services to be provided by Grapevine, which was also on the consent agenda this evening. And then it provides for administrative service reimbursement to the general fund for HR, the cost of human resources, finance, fleet facilities, as well as legal and CMO time. These are services which are paid for by the general fund, and then this fund reimburses for those services. The Crime Control District does have seven authorized positions, and those positions support the SRO program and the Neighborhood Community Policing Program. The proposed budget does include implementing the compensation study results shown for the public safety area. So in summary, as presented, the revenues for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 are estimated to be 3.6 million, and the expenditures are estimated to be 3.3. So this is an overview of the Crime Control and Prevention District budget for this fiscal year 2022 and 2023. The agenda item is the public hearing on the 2022, 2023 proposed budget for the Crime Control District, which the governing body that created the district is required by Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code to hold. The actual adoption of this budget will occur with the adoption of the entire city budget scheduled for your consideration of approval on September 13th. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions, and Chief Barton is with me and available for questions also.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Tean or Chief? And again, we're not voting on the actual measure tonight, but we will be closing the public hearing and voting on this on September 13th. I will then entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Neves is asking, do we close the public hearing or leave it open? This one, we will be closing tonight. Councilmember Neves?
I move to close the public hearing.
Have a second from Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Long, he notes a Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor and unopposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item 10 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, and this is to receive public comment concerning the proposed 22, 23 municipal budget. Ms. Tean, again.
Yes, thank you. Perfect. Okay. So as part of the budget process, a public hearing is conducted by the City Council to receive public input concerning the proposed 2022, 2023 municipal budget. Another public hearing will be held on September 13th of 2022. So as part of the public hearing, I will provide a brief overview of what is included in the proposed budget. Before I present the proposed budget, I would like to take a moment to explain the budget process. The budget process began in early February with the department directors and their staff developing their budgets. The proposed budgets were submitted to the Finance Department in mid-March, and the department's budgets were reviewed with the City Manager's Office, and those were held in April. A virtual town hall meeting, talk- A virtual town hall meeting to obtain public input was also held in April, and staff held five budget workshops with counsel. One was held in May, three in June, and then one in July. The proposed budget was filed with the City Secretary's Office on August 5th. So tonight, a public hearing on the proposed budget is being held, and again, another public hearing on the budget and consideration of an ordinance approving the fiscal year 22/23 budget will be held on September 13th, and it will be on that account agenda. So I'll start with the general fund. Total general fund revenues are projected to be almost $65.3 million for the next fiscal year. This is an increase of approximately $1.5 million, or 2.4% from the current year adopted budget. This slide shows that there are eight revenue categories that contribute to the general fund revenues. First is the property tax category, which is represented by the blue area. It is the primary revenue source of the general fund. Property taxes total almost $41.8 million, or it makes up about 64% of the total general fund revenues. Proposed property tax revenue is based on a property tax rate that is less than both the voter approval rate and the no new revenue rate that is established by Senate Bill 2. The next category is sales tax, and it's represented in the orange area. Sales tax is estimated at almost $11.9 million, or about 18% of the total proposed general fund revenues. We continue to budget sales tax as if the rule, again, is in effect. And so based on additional analysis and rising prices, we are budgeting an increase in the sales tax revenue. As you can see from this graph, the majority of the revenue received by the general fund is from property tax and sales tax. These two revenue categories account for about $53.7 million, or 82% of general fund revenues. The remaining six categories represent about $11.6 million, or 18% of the general fund revenues. I'd like to point out a couple of other items. For the franchise tax category, represented by the beige area, the E911, the PEG funds, and then the public education revenues were moved from the general fund to separate special revenue funds. And these revenues, and we did this because these revenue sources are restricted in how they can be used, so accounting for these in a special revenue fund is appropriate. In addition, any corresponding expenditures would be recorded in these new funds. Next, the administrative services category, represented by the green area. This is, the revenue category is the amount that's paid by the other funds to the general fund for those services that I mentioned with the Crime Control Prevention District, such as the human resources, finance, information technology, facilities, services, fleet services, and legal. And these are items that are paid for and provided by the general fund to those funds, and this is the amount that they pay. An example would be that the Water and Sewer Fund pays the general fund about $2.2 million for these services. These amounts, the amounts that are paid to the general fund by these other funds were determined by a cost allocation study that was performed in 2020. So the last thing to point out is the transfer in from the Capel Recreation Development Corporation of 35% of sales tax received by that fund is not included in this year's budget. We did not, we are not making that transfer. Next, I'll cover the general fund expenditures. This slide shows that expenditures by division as well as by classification. Total general fund expenditures were approximately, or are approximately, $76.9 million. This is an increase of about $13.8 million from the current year adopted budget. However, about $12.1 million is to fully fund a capital replacement fund and an enterprise solutions fund. And so these items, as shown on this slide, are being funded with an amount that is set aside in the fund balance of the general fund to provide for these two areas. Specifically, the amount was set aside in the fund balance is from the additional sales tax received during fiscal years 20 and 2021 because of the rule change was placed on hold pending the outcome of litigation brought by several cities, including Capel. So if we remove the $12.1 million from the $76.9, that leaves the $64.8 million, which when compared to the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget, is only a 2.6% increase, which is pretty remarkable when you consider that inflation is over 8%. So we'll go back to the expenditure side. You can see that the transfer out on this slide is the $12.1, which is the amount that is being moved to the two replacement funds that I just discussed. Salaries is also increasing because we moved six police officers from the Capel Crime Control Prevention District to the general fund, and salaries also includes the results of the compensation study. The changes in salary and benefits just mentioned, along with the transfer to fully fund the two replacement funds, are really the primary reasons for the increase in expenditures from the fiscal year 22 adopted to the fiscal year 2023 proposed. The next fund that I'll just present is the debt service fund. It's used to account for the principal and interest on the outstanding debt. This fund derives its revenue from property taxes of about $7.4 million, which is the dark blue area. Interest earnings is estimated at about $10,000, and then transfers in totaling $3.2 million is shown in white. The transfer in is from the Water Sewer Fund and the Capel Recreation Development Corporation Fund for their portion of the principal and interest payments on the certificate of obligation bonds issued for water sewer and CRDC projects. This presentation is different from prior years. Historically, the principal and interest due on the water and sewer and CRDC, portion of CO bonds outstanding are presented in those funds. Presenting the principal and interest due on all COs outstanding in one fund clearly communicates the total certificate of obligation and general obligation debt outstanding. As anyone interested in this information, no longer needs to look in multiple places. They can just go to one place to see that information. The expenditures of the debt service fund associated with the certificate of obligations and general obligation debt total about $10.7 million, with interest paid on the debt equal to about $3.6 million, and that's shown in the green area on the graph. The yellow area represents the bond principal, which is a little over $7 million, and then there's agency fees of $10,000. So total general obligation and certificate of obligation debt is about $109 million. Repayment is fairly rapid, with 67% being retired over the next 10 years, and about 90.5% will be retired in 15 years. These percentages, of course, will decrease if bonds, will decrease if bonds are issued or increase if bonds are retired early. So all bonds currently outstanding are scheduled to be repaid in 2041. Next are the special revenue and internal service funds. The city has 20 funds that are classified as special revenue funds and three funds that are classified as internal service funds. Each special revenue fund has a dedicated revenue source, and the expenditures are restricted to specific purposes. The revenue source for the first six funds shown in the first column are from fines and forfeitures. So an example of that would be traffic tickets. The red light fund, or the red light enforcement fund was used to record red light camera violations. The red light cameras were removed in 2019, so the red light enforcement fund no longer has a revenue source. And the fund balance of this fund is being used to pay for the purchase of the Axon cameras used by the police department. And so once that contract is completed, this fund will go away. Next, the hotel occupancy tax fund, the last fund shown in the first column, receives revenue from occupancy tax remitted by hotels located in the city as well as short-term rentals. The funds shown in the second column receive revenues from various sources. For example, the donations special revenue fund is where we record donations from individuals or businesses who has specified how they would like their donations to be used. The drainage utility district revenue is from the stormwater fee that's on the water bill. The Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery revenue source, that is from those who purchase burial rites and other services from the cemetery. So these 17 special revenue funds do not receive any funding from property taxes or sales tax. However, the three special revenue funds shown at the bottom of the first column, the Crime Prevention District, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, and the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, do receive funding from sales tax, but not from property taxes. Specifically, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund and the Crime Prevention District each receive a quarter percent sales tax. A sales tax collected by the IMF Fund is for street maintenance, and the sales tax, again, collected by the Crime Control Prevention District is used for crime prevention programs. The CRDC Fund receives 1/2% sales tax, which can be used for projects that qualify under the 4B legislation. The CRDC Debt Service Fund receives a portion of the sales tax collected to repay the principal and interest on the CRDC-related debt that's then transferred to the Debt Service Fund. The remaining three funds are the internal service funds. The city's internal service funds are the self-funded health plan, the capital fleet replacement fund, and then the enterprise solutions replacement fund. And these funds are used to account for the cost of goods or services provided by these funds to the other funds of the city. Next is the Water and Sewer Fund, which is classified as an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are used when the intent is to cover the cost of providing the goods or services through user fees. Proposed water and sewer revenues are about $19.6 million, and this approximate, is approximately equal to the adopted 21/22 budgeted revenues. As shown on this slide, the major source of revenue is the sale of water. The city receives 61.5% of the budget, or about $12.1 million, from this revenue source. The next largest source of revenue for the Water and Sewer Fund is the charge for sewer treatment services. The fund receives about 36.4%, or $7.1 million, from this source. So water sales plus sewer sales equals $19.2 million, or 97.9% of the total projected revenues of this fund. The remaining 2.1%, or about $400,000, is revenue from interest, impact fees, and other revenue sources. The proposed budget does not include a water sewer rate increase. A move to winter averaging for sewer services will be brought to counsel for your consideration next month. Staff is analyzing if a change in sewer rates is necessary if the city moves to the winter Next, I'll go over the proposed expenses for the Water and Sewer Fund, which total about $20.1 million. This is an increase of about 2.8%, or $539,000. The increase in expense is the net impact of an increase in salary and benefits related to the implementation of the compensation study, an increase in the transfer out for the water sewers funds portion of fully funding the capital replacement fund, an increase in the cost of water, an increase in the cost of sewer, a decrease in services because fiscal year 22 included a one-time cost of a wastewater condition assessment, and then a decrease in a capital expenditure since we're proposing fully funding the capital replacement fund, only water sewer meters to have on hand are being budgeted. So a couple of items to note. The cost of water and cost of sewer, those divisions make up 58% of the expenses of the Water Sewer Fund, and these expenses are contracted costs. Utility billing, utility operations, and combined services make up about 32% of the total expenses, and then debt service represents about 10% of the total expenses of the fund. So in summary, the proposed budget includes the anticipated revenues and expenditures for not only the general fund, but all funds of the city. The total impact of the fund, on the fund balance of all funds of the city is an increase of $2.8 million. The fund balance of the general fund is expected to decrease by about $11.7 million, and the retained earnings of the proprietary funds are expected to increase about 10.8. And both of these changes are directly related to the transfer from the general fund to fully fund the capital replacement and enterprise solution replacement funds as we've been discussing. The debt service fund, fund balance is expected to decrease about $52,000, and the fund balance of the special revenue funds is expected to increase about $3.7 million. And so this concludes my presentation on the proposed budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Tien? Seeing none, we did not have anybody sign up to speak on this item either. This item will be continued until September 13th, so we will leave the public hearing open and vote on it on the September 13th meeting. So I would call for a motion to continue the public hearing until September 13th at the City Council meeting on that date. Counsel member Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to continue the public hearing until September 13th.
Thank you. Second by counsel member Hina Hosa Smith. All in favor?
Long Hina Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor and opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so I will open this public hearing, and this is to receive public comment concerning the proposed 22/23 tax rate of 0.518731. Ms. Tien?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This is the one that's the most exciting to me. So this next public hearing, again, is on the tax rate. Pursuant to Texas Property Code, Tax Code, Section 26.06, titled Notice, Hearing, and Vote on the Tax Rate, the governing body of a taxing unit may not hold a public hearing before publishing a notice of the public hearing is given. The notice of this public hearing was published on August 13th in the official newspaper of the city. The city has complied with the public hearing notice requirement stated in the Texas Property Tax Code, Section 26, for this public hearing. The property tax rate of .518731 is lower than both the no new revenue rate of .519193 and the voter approval rate of .595479, which includes unused increments and is the rate that is required to be published. The truth and taxation worksheet tracks the difference between the adopted rate and the voter approval tax rate for the prior three years, and those differences are considered unused increments. And the sum of the unused increments for the prior three years is added to the current voter approval rate calculation to determine the voter approval rate with unused increments. And this is the highest property tax rate that counsel could adopt without going to the voters. The voter approval rate before unused increments is .518735. The proposed tax rate is less than this rate also. Another opportunity for the public input will be held on September 13th. The tax rate ordinance will also be considered for approval at that meeting. Another public hearing notice for the September 13th meeting will be published on September 3rd in the city's paper of record, which is the Rambler. Now that I've established all the requirements to hold this public meeting have been met, I'd like to provide some information concerning the proposed tax rate. First, the proposed tax rate is divided into two parts. Maintenance and Operations, or MNO, which is the portion of the tax rate that is used to fund the operations of the city and is presented in the green on the bar graph. The other part is the Interest and Sinking, which is the INS, and it's the blue portion on the bar graph. This is the portion that is used to pay the principal and interest on the outstanding debt of the city. The proposed tax rate for fiscal year 22/23, again, is .518731, with .441836, or about 85% being used to fund operations, and .076895, or 15% for percent, for debt service. The proposed tax rate, again, of point five one eight seven three one, does raise seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand thirty-one dollars less in revenue from property taxes and is a ten point five six percent decrease in the current twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two tax rate of point five eight. The proposed tax rate for this fiscal year twenty-twenty-three is the lowest tax rate since at least nineteen ninety. So how was this accomplished? First, council's direction to use the proceeds from the sale of the Northlake property to defees bonds directly impacted the tax rate. The INS or debt portion of the tax rate was a little over ten cents, as you can see in the graph on the screen. Because of council's direction, the INS portion of the tax rate decreased to, as shown on this slide, just a little over seven and a half cents for the twenty-twenty-three budget year. In addition, if you recall the CESSOL effect, as values go up, the tax rate comes down. So the combination of reducing the INS portion of the tax rate by defeating the bonds, not issuing new debt, and then the current real estate market have resulted in the lowest property tax rate since at least nineteen ninety. So the city's total taxable valuation is, as you can see on this slide, about nine point six billion, which is ten point one four percent higher than last year. The ten point one four percent, or just over eight hundred and eighty-five million, increase in taxable assessed value is a result of an average increase of nine point four three percent on residential property values, a twelve point eight one percent average increase in commercial property values, and about an eight point three percent increase in business personal property. Included in these increases is the addition of new property totaling about thirty point four million and about seven hundred and twenty-six million in reappraisals. This slide tells us that the city is very close to build out, and this is important to know because the impact of SB two on Capel is very different than the impact on a growing community. And this is because of the way that new construction is treated when doing the calculations for the no-new revenue rate and voter approval rate. This next slide shows what portions of property value is from commercial versus residential. In the early nineties, the split was twenty percent commercial and eighty percent residential. You can see the shift in the makeup of the property values has continued. In twenty-seventeen, the split was forty-one percent commercial and fifty-nine percent residential. In twenty-eighteen, the split was forty-one point five percent commercial and fifty-eight point five percent residential. And then in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, the split was forty-three percent commercial and fifty-seven percent residential. And now in both twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, commercial properties make up forty-five percent of the values and residential makes up fifty-five. So you can see that the allocation of property values between commercial and residential has narrowed as the city has developed. So what most people are wondering is what is the impact on their tax bill? The next two slides cover only the city's portion of the property owner's tax bill. Again, this is only the city's portion of the tax bill. The tax bill received by property owners includes all taxing units, for example, not only the city but the school district and the county. So again, the examples I'm showing you this evening is only addressing the city's portion of the tax bill received by a property owner. This slide shows the impact of the proposed tax rate on a homeowner receiving a homestead exemption. The first section of this chart shows the average home value in Capel is now four hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars for residential property receiving the homestead exemption. This is a thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollar, or about a nine point seven two percent increase in value over prior year. Values are established by Dallas and Denton Central Appraisal Districts. The appraisal districts have specific legislation that they must follow when establishing property values. The city has no involvement in the property value setting process. The next section on the graph shows the total tax rate. Again, it shows the split between the INS and the MNO portions, and then the change in each portion. You can see that both the MNO and INS portions of the tax rate have decreased a little over three cents, each resulting in about a six cent, or again, ten point five six percent decrease in the total tax rate. The final section provides the average annual tax bill from the city for a residential property with a homestead exemption will be two thousand three hundred and forty dollars, or forty-five dollars less than last year. The monthly tax levy for this home would be a hundred and ninety-five dollars, or three dollars and seventy-five cents per month, less than the prior year. This next slide shows the impact of the city's proposed tax rate on the over-sixty-five homeowner receiving both the homestead and over-sixty-five exemption. Again, this is, this example is for the city's portion of the property owner's total property tax bill. Also, I wanted to note, at this time, we do not have the average values of property receiving the over-sixty-five exemption, so this analysis took the twenty-twenty-two over-sixty-five value and increased it by ten percent, which is the maximum increase that a homestead property can have in one year. So after the assessed values, we deduct the five percent from the homestead, and then we deduct the over-sixty-five exemption. The exemptions are different for each of the years because council took action in May to increase the over-sixty-five exemption from seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. So after deducting the exemptions, we now have the taxable value of the property for last year and this year. We then multiply the taxable value of the property by the appropriate tax rate, divide by a hundred, to arrive at the average property tax bill on a home in Capel with both the homestead and the over-sixty-five exemption. The example shows that the average annual property tax bill from the city will be reduced by approximately a hundred and eighteen dollars. Someone receiving the over-sixty-five exemption will pay about a hundred and three, thirty-three dollars per month versus the one hundred and forty-three dollars per month paid last year, which is almost a ten dollar per month reduction. So this concludes the presentation on the property tax rate, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Kim, we are in your debt for doing such an outstanding job year to year on the budget, so thank you and your staff for this. If you take a look at what you've done, we also, if you recall, increased the senior exemption. And in doing that, we've also been able to come in under the no-new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, and, as you said, present one of the lowest tax rates that we've ever had since nineteen eighty-six, so.
I knew you had it went back further than me.
So, you know, this is, this is something that we've all got to be very proud of, and it didn't come without engagement from the community, long-term direction and planning by this council and the staff, and the staff has been part of it, and it's just been, you know, it's really nice to see this all come together. So with that being said, Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Tean? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify one more time. Can you just go ahead and repeat the proposed tax rate, no-new revenue rate, and voter approval rate one more time? Because that I heard, I know you have lots to read, and I thought maybe during the presentation, some part got mixed up.
Did I say something wrong? Okay.
Just want to confirm.
Okay, so how about if I also go back? Because I think we, so it doesn't clear. So the no-new revenue rate is point five one nine one nine three. The voter-approved rate with unused increments is point five nine five four seven nine. The voter-approval rate without including unused increments is point five one eight seven three five. And the proposed tax rate is point five one eight seven three one. Okay.
Thank you. We had no members sign up to speak for the public hearing, so Counsel, this is, will be voted on on the September thirteenth meeting. We do need to continue this public hearing until that date, so I would like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to September thirteenth. Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing until September thirteenth.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carol. All in favor?
Long Hina Jose Smith, Carol Neville's Jen Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is our city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all know how to clear out a room. Just say city managers' reports, and they all leave.
They're your employees, sir.
Yes, I know. I noticed that. I'll remember that tomorrow. Just a few items this evening. Beltline construction continues. Appreciate everybody's cooperation with that. The contracting company plans to start shutting down the north half of Airline Drive and directing the traffic one-way westbound. The reason for this is because they're working at the intersection. They finished one side, now they're going to finish the other side. That's going to be about a six-to-eight week project to get that done. So it's something that the folks over there are familiar with, it's just switching the one-way traffic. The panel replacement project on Mockingbird is complete, on Falcon is complete, and on Dividend, Moore and Sandy Lake, they've put a hold on for right now because of, with the start of school. So they'll start working in small areas to not impact school traffic next week. The East Bethel Bridge, Creekview as we refer to, is expected to start construction in September, and will be coordinating with the residents and the HOA. The Village Parkway Pump Station, here's one of the supply chains. The contractor has mobilized to install the new switchgear to accommodate the larger permanent generator, but the permanent generator is on back order and is expected to be delivered in February of twenty-twenty-three. So, supply chain. Intersection Improvement Project, I actually got a call from somebody this week. They were so excited that certain companies finally got their stuff off those wooden poles. So hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll be able to get finished with that, if not next week, so there's progress there. We do have a work session next Tuesday night, August thirtieth, starting at six P.M. on the second-floor conference room. And I think I sent out just a little piece of information, but our round one of our water credit, a hundred-dollar water credit for our seniors. So one thousand one hundred and seventy-six customers this round totaling a hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred dollars in credit was being mailed out, and the second round should be following behind that as well. So the commitment that you made to our seniors on our sixty-five and older on the water credit is starting to happen. That is all I have to report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number thirteen is mayor and council reports. School did start last Wednesday, in case no one noticed, and prior to that, the school had a welcome to Capel for their new teachers. There were two hundred and sixty new teachers that have joined Capel Independent School District this year, and it was a really phenomenal meet and greet for all of us that were there. A lot of enthusiasm, and they're really looking for a great year. We heard from Dr. Hunt during work session on the upcoming population and demographics, and things are looking very bright for the school district. As a reminder, our, as we've been talking about all evening, the public hearing for the proposed budget and tax rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will continue at the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting on September the thirteenth. And please head out to Andrew Brown Park East for Andy Brown Eats on Thursday, August the twenty-fifth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and grab a quick dinner from a local food truck. Let's see, come and see the world's most celebrated illusionist, Rob Lake's mind-blowing illusions dazzle and entertain. This will be at the Capel Arts Center on August twenty-eighth. Also at the Capel Arts Center on September ninth, the members of the damn-tall buildings will blend an element of bluegrass blues and rocks to create a captivating, high-energy sound. Tickets are available for purchase. And then please join guest instructor Sheila Shingla for an introduction to the mindfulness and mindfulness meditation practice at the Cosby Library on August the twenty-eighth from two to three P.M. Sheila is currently in training with UCLA Mindful Awareness Research Center to become a certified mindfulness teacher. This session is open to adults age eighteen and up, and registration is not required. And then finally, register to take a free CPR AED class at Life Safety Park on September eighth. Class registration and details are available online. Counsel, do you have any items of public interest here? All right, moving on, item number fourteen are council committee reports. These are items concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation required. Item A is a report on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition with Councilmember Don Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. The DRMC, we have met a couple of times over the last quarter. Some of the highlights and items of note, we have had special guests over the last quarter. We had State Senator Nathan Johnson speak to us in June, and then this, earlier this month, Harvey Cronberg, who is the publisher of the forum report, also reported out on some of the political goings-on in Austin. In July, the DRMC hosted a retirement reception for Bill Hale, who was the Texas chief engineer. He retired recently after a thirty-nine-year career, including as then as the Dallas District engineer, so much appreciation to him for his contribution to the North Texas transportation effort over the years. All of our speakers and all of our discussions have continued to emphasize that transportation will continue to be key in keeping up with the growth in Texas, and specifically, North Texas or the metroplex is going to continue to grow. They are estimating, you know, growing from eight million to eleven and a half million by twenty forty-five, which is approximately a million people every eight years. So having mobility and transportation is going to be key as we continue to expand. We also, the different transportation authorities also continue to focus on safety as, actually, twenty-twenty-one unfortunately was one of the worst years since the early eighties. As always, they remind us to keep our projects ready, so when the funding appears, we have shovel-ready projects to get in line, otherwise you lose your place in line. So as we continue to grow, that will continue to be extremely important, and that's my report.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on the Woven Health Clinic. Councilmember Mark Hill.
Mayor, I did not receive an update from Woven, so we'll have to wait till next time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Item C is a report on Metrocrest Services. Mayor Protem Bijou Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update since October of last year, twenty-one to today, and that's almost a year. Five hundred and eight residents visited the food pantry, that's fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventy-two times. Seven hundred and forty-eight meals delivered to the seniors in Capel. Seventy-four households utilized our workforce development surveys. Eighty-two households received emergency rent and utility assistance totaling one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The SAC Summer Hunger Feeding Program for school-age kids wrapped up this month. Sixty-six Capel students received four thousand three hundred and seventy meals through this program. Metrocrest Services is in the middle of fundraising for the new facility. Estimated about fifteen four and fo- eight million dollars, and they have raised so far twelve point seven million dollars. And that's, that's the report for the Metrocrest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for reporting. They, they do a lot of good work for the city of Capel. Item number fifteen is public service announcements concerning items of community interests with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, does anybody have a public service announcement? Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to briefly talk about something that is coming in September. So Hunger Action Month is going, is held every year in September, and associated with that, the North Texas Food Bank does a peanut butter drive. They are focused on collecting up to half a million pounds, or half a million dollars, of peanut butter. The reason, you may ask, why peanut butter? Well, peanut butter is kid-friendly, it's nutritious, it's high in protein, it's shelf-stable, and it's often not a popular donated item. So they, they are focusing to try to bring attention to the, to Hunger Action Month by raising peanut butter. What you can do is you can go to the North Texas Food Bank website and look for Peanut Butter Drive, and it will tell you how you can donate actual peanut butter or virtual peanut butter, meaning dollars, to, for them to go and buy peanut butter to give away to hungry kids and people in need across their whole thirteen-county area. So that's coming up in September.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other public service announcements? Seeing none, item number sixteen is necessary action from executive session. We did not have an executive session, so there was no act- We did not have an executive session, so there was no action necessary. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at eight forty-one PM.